Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out in this nice little storm we managed to get this evening. Fifteen hundred and seventy first regular meeting of the Board of Alderman of the City of St. Anne, Missouri, held at City Hall on Monday, April first, twenty twenty-four at seven P. M., and it's not April first. Alderman Murphy, can you read the board of the question? All right, I want it for me, audience. I'll be at agendas and public speaker cards available on the back of the room. For resident would like to address the board during the public comments section of the agenda, please fill out a speaker card and have it ready. I want to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Alderman and public comments will be entertained during the specific times set aside in the agenda. All right, on with communications. I need approval for minutes of March fourth, please. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Matt, we have documents for destruction. Do we have any questions? Thank you. All right, can I get a first, please? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Public hearings. Will now hold. Public hearing for a special use permit for a breakfast and lunch cafe at thirty-one, ninety-one Ashby Road. Are there any proponents in the audience? You want to introduce yourself and tell the board what's going on?
So my name is Janice Capato. I am owner of Salty Barber Shop as well. I'm trying to open something new in St. Anne, which will be through a bike cafe. I want something with breakfast, lunch, and perhaps dinner, and as well as pastries and coffee, of course.
No, are you just gonna be in one spot there where the old town subs was? Are you gonna be, you're gonna have more? Is it gonna be sit down?
It's the same two spots where the kitchen and the sit down places, yes.
You're just gonna remodel it?
How many portions do you want?
Uh, between three, three or four.
Three or four? Is it three or is it four?
April pool.
Right.
And what's your hour gonna be?
From six A. M., uh, flexible depending, um, it could be till eight P. M.
Monday through Sunday?
Saturday, yes.
Yeah, corner of Sunday?
Perhaps. Customers would say if we get pretty busy, I would go for a Sunday as well. Yes.
When you're doing your permit, you did ask them to go till eight P. M. That way you don't have to come back.
Can do it. Yeah, sure.
So I have a question. If you're gonna do supper, will you be doing one of your supper with your menu at any time or no, yes?
That's a future thing I would like to do. Offer it.
So right now it's a special use, no, no all.
Any other questions?
I'm a visitor, couple of years ago.
All right, um. Are there any opponents?
Thank you.
All right, during that, I need a motion for a first and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And against?
Yeah, lady, thanks for choosing St. Anne for your restaurant.
Special use permit for the breakfast and lunch cafe is approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, we will now entertain public comments on agenda items. Does anyone out there have any questions on the agenda items? Introduction of bills and resolutions. First reading of bill number thirty-four forty-two and ordinance authorizing the city administrator to accept a proposal from TextMyGov for smart texting services. Second reading of bill number thirty-four forty-two, the ordinance authorizing the city administrator to accept a proposal from TextMyGov for smart texting services.
So board, I'm not trying to be rude because we showed that at the committee meeting, so excuse me real quick. I want to make sure the public knows, actually, Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Deputy Chief Ravens and Captain Carrigan here, they actually came up with this idea, which is TextMyGov. We showed it during the committee meeting where you would text, like to say text newsletter. Well, the newsletter will come back and link on your phone. You click on it and the whole newsletter comes right on your device. So it is through text, whether you have text capability on your iPad, so on, but normally people are doing things through their phone. So it's not by computer, but by anything that has text. So it can be computer if you have that software capability that goes to that. So we're gonna have, it's gonna be a test trial. We're paying for that out of the drug forfeiture fund. So it's free to the taxpayers, to the board, obviously, since the city won't pay for it. It's coming out of the drug forfeiture. So the price is gonna be somewhere, it's thirty-five hundred for the initial fee, then it's sixty-eight hundred dollars every year. So we're, we're gonna really think that it's, um, we, upcoming trend, that it's gonna be really good for our residents, that especially a lot of people who are texting now and so on. So not for unfortunate problems, some of us older people like me, so. But we think you're gonna like it and the board's approval with that, since we're paying for it, we thought it'd be an extra service. That's gonna be really, uh, unique and interesting, a really good tool for our public. Did you know if anybody had any questions for that? Seeing that, thank you.
Hey, does the board have any questions?
I just can't wait for it to get passed.
Oh, and the administration on that will be Deputy Chief Ravens and Mary Kay Dole. So if you guys need anything, just like the newsletter or so on, please just, I said, we're gonna have some mistakes in here, but I think within that six-month period, I think everything that we've lived through will be, will be really good. Your suggestions, as always, will really help us, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I need a first and a second motion, please.
Second.
Matt, roll call.
Hey, singer.
Aye.
Maria.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Shy.
Yes.
Thank you. Bill number thirty-four forty-two becomes ordinance number thirty-three forty-nine. First reading of bill number thirty-four forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute the pavement restoration agreement with Metropolitan Sewer District for St. Joakim Lane. Second reading of bill number thirty-four forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute a pavement restoration agreement with the Metropolitan Sewer District for St. Joakim Lane. Matt?
With the MSD project on St. Joakim, they, obviously, they run into some issues down there regarding the sewer and the hollies backfilling that was put in. So they have some issues regarding the, you know, the project budget and how they're going to restore the pavement at the end of it. You know, in order to facilitate the, get MSD to focus in on actually getting the sewer portion of it done, we reached out to them to, you know, indicate that if they would focus on the sewer portion of it, we would take care of the pavement restoration. You know, with that being said, you know, they tore up our street, so there's a payment that they need to make to us to compensate us tearing up the street. So basically, what the agreement, the outline of the agreement that we have tenably with them is that they would pay us a total of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we would come in and some of that money would be used for a temporary grabbing surface, and then next year we would, uh, the project is complete. From a sewer standpoint, we would come in and pave the street and to our standards and replace it with curb gutters there and, uh, and gap sidewalks, uh, crosswalks. So, um, you know, that's about what we can do to help facilitate this in project before, so. Sewer work is left in MSD's hands, um, you know, they, you know, agreed that they would focus on the sewer work and us to the street work, we were interested, so I think this is, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna work for the city, but it, it speeds up the, uh, project.
They certainly don't deserve the street they have right now. Will that, will the, uh, a dollar amount, does that include future street that they're going to be digging up?
Yeah, I mean, that includes, that's the, the cost for the entire street. The only thing that's not included there, they damaged more of the curb than they wanted to pay us an additional fee.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
No.
All right, and I'll take a first and a second motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Hey, singer.
Aye.
Maria.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yeah.
Jimenez.
Yeah.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Shy.
Okay, bill number thirty-four forty-three becomes ordinance number thirty-three fifty-one. All right, first reading of bill number thirty-four forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract addendum with shortcut pouring. Second reading of bill number thirty-four forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract addendum with shortcut pouring. Matt?
Yes, this just carries over the existing agreement, uh, an additional year with shortcut pouring, given the environment that we're in for finding competent contractors and, you know, without encouraging a huge cost increase. They've agreed to extend it another year, so I think it's, I think it's a good job. Brian's satisfied with it. I think it's worthwhile for us to at least give him a year.
And what was the percentage increase?
Three percent.
Three percent?
I mean, it's well, yeah, inflation.
Does the board have any questions? All right, I need a first and a second motion, please. Matt, roll call.
Maria.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Shy.
Okay, bill number thirty-four forty-four becomes ordinance number thirty-three fifty-one. For first reading of thirty-four, bill number thirty-four forty-five, an ordinance providing for a discount program for city recreational facilities for city employees and certain not-for-profit groups. Second reading of bill number thirty-four forty-five, an ordinance providing for discount program for city recreation facilities, for city employees, and certain not-for-profit groups. Matt?
Yes, this just codifies our, uh, most of our longstanding policies for allowing city employees to get, uh, utilize recreational facilities, uh, receive discounts on, uh, getting road and stuff like that, so. Just put it all in one place and also has the, which that was to, uh, remember is, uh, for profits of the, I suppose, broom run is free charge.
Yes, chief.
Mayor, uh, board and Matt, I just want to tell you on behalf of the police department how much, this goes all the way back to the father when she was mayor. Uh, the department wasn't getting raises and went through hell and back when Matt came in here and brought us down from a four-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit to now what you have now in reserve, so big deal to him. But thank you for allowing us to do that. Just little things like, uh, just want the public to know, even for, uh, on a Tuesday night now, we have the community center where we have our employees playing ping pong balls. Not only is it promoting health and wellness, but it's a good morale booster too. So you guys just allowing us to do that, these officers I'm talking right now could easily go south. Many of them have offered jobs where they're making up to twenty thousand, no joke, twenty thousand dollars more. They stay here not only because of you guys, but because of the public, you know, they support us. And when you have that, it doesn't become about money. And it's a little things like that I want to thank each and every one of you. I'm talking right now, they could all build someone else that choose here, stay here, visit you back, you know. Um, I also feel great policemen are doing excellent things, but this is one of just those things that I can't thank Tim. All of you guys, so thank you.
No, thank, thank you guys. I mean, I saw an ad over the last week that would scare the heck out of, out of me worrying about whether or not we were going to lose our officers, so I really appreciate the, the employees, appreciate what we can't get done for them. All right, does the board have any questions? All right, give me a first and a second. Matt?
Hey, singer. Maria.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Shy.
Okay, bill number thirty-four forty-five becomes ordinance number thirty-three fifty-two. All right, first reading of bill number thirty-four forty-six, an ordinance amending chapter one hundred of the City of St. Anne City Code relating to enforcement of city ordinances, reimbursement of city expenses, and remedies for misconduct by city vendors and contractors. Second reading of bill number thirty-four forty-six, an ordinance amending chapter one hundred of the City of St. Anne City Code relating to enforcement of city ordinances, reimbursement of city expenses, and remedies for misconduct by city vendors and contractors. Matt?
Yes, this ordinance, basically what this does is it gives us an enforcement mechanism. So if you owe the city, uh, money either through back fees or taxes, we don't have to going forward, we don't have to issue you any type of permits. So, uh, this, uh, until you make us whole, uh, so this gives us the ability to ensure that people who owe us, uh, fees and taxes are paid before taking any additional benefit from the city as well as.
Is this major or the businesses or is this residents as well?
Well, it could be residents if there's a little thing on their property or something like that.
I saw a question on Facebook asking for an example.
They have lean on their property and they committed, uh, put a deck on their house. Maybe you should be able to lean on it.
Matt? Does the board have any questions? All right, let's get a first and a second.
Seven.
Singer.
Matt, roll call.
Hey, singer.
Aye.
Maria.
Aye.
Thomas. Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Okay, bill number thirty-four forty-six becomes ordinance number thirty-three fifty-three. All right, can I get approval on the monthly reports of one? Please, two questions?
No, please.
What if somebody got a question?
Ask it. Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, it's now time for public comment on not agenda items. Any public comment? All right, we're going on, chief.
No comments in the crowd. If I could first have Luke Vogel come on up, George Ravens and Jim Carrey come on up. Chris, you have copies of everything, and we said this at the committee meeting, but, um, this is for your outstanding, actually, chief's commendation for your outstanding performance on the twenty-second of March, two thousand twenty-four, when you assisted St. Anne residents with removing multiple trees from their backyard and overall dedication to community outreach. I wanted to let the public know that, um, on the twenty-second, prior to that, actually, Ivan Sparks, Alvin Sparks came with us with a problem with two eighty-year-old residents that were bickering amongst each other. And, uh, these gentlemen behind me got chainsaws. Ryan Meyer actually loaned us one. We had three others. We took down four large trees, four, and I'm talking about with a thirty-six-inch chainsaw. So we were there for twelve hours helping these residents. We know that we can't do that all the time, but both residents were extremely happy, and that's, once again, this department is, especially the police department too, along with the inspectors, were picking out trash during the flood, you know, cutting trees down, uh, you know, picking limbs up and stuff. And even when the trash trucks weren't even running, you know, recycling, we were going around doing that. So your police department really cares just as much as you care about them, so I wanted to make sure that congratulations for you guys' outstanding performance. It's very, very well appreciated. Round of applause. If I could have Casey and Jim Fossil come on up. Chris, you can have copies of all these. I'll make sure, um, this is chief's commendation for Jim Fossil and Casey Gervens for your outstanding performance and dedication to the City of St. Anne, assistance with administrative search warrants, building inspections, and maintaining outstanding relationship with the City, City of St. Anne Police Department. Uh, I'm not gonna get into what town, but where Bobby Vogel, uh, came from was basically, um, where the police department wasn't interacting. They might be different now, so I don't want to point fingers, but the police department, you know, the relationship with their city inspectors, they're, 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 they're never one. Here, that's a lot different. You guys constantly, Bobby, you know this, as their leader, everyone loves you, but I'm gonna tell you something, you guys never really get a lot of credit. I know that they're always thankful, but I'm telling you with administrative search warrants for cars, for houses, look at how many, uh, houses are condemned. You always keep up with the condemned list. The way you guys work with residents, it's very, I mean, just incredible. And I wanted to make sure you guys were recognized. I know the mayor was just talking about that the other day, and the board, they're always trying to give compliments. So city very, very much appreciates what you guys do. In fact, uh, I just let everyone know, because you guys will get a, uh, email in the morning, we're doing another search warrant in town. I can't say where or what until five minutes prior, but you guys are always the first to know. Then we'll let it out on Facebook. But these gentlemen come there right after we're done clearing this house, where you have needles that are opened, uh, you know, so, I mean, they're literally, if they weren't wearing the right boots, probably would've got stuck with a couple needles on the last one. Glass, salon drugs, paraphernalia, feces everywhere. It's disgusting environment, not only what the police department does, but building commissioner and the two inspectors. So I think you'd be right, a round of applause. Have Monica and Colin Rumsa. You guys look sharp, thank you. Hold on to that. Uh, this is all stemming from, come on up, Timon. Love it. Come on up. So I'm gonna read this and then you guys will have a better understanding, because this was really incredible what they did. To, uh, chief's commendation again to Detective Lieutenant Monica Ruelas and to Colin Rumsa for your outstanding performance on the twelfth and the thirteenth of March, two thousand twenty-four, when you assisted the Major, uh, Major Case Squad of Greater St. Louis with translation and bringing peace to the victim's family. That is for Lieutenant Monica Ruelas. Normally, we don't, when we're going and we're helping with the crowd, and I'm gonna actually read yours too, because there's something a little bit different. I want to explain to the crowd here. Uh, this is the letter that we actually got. We don't really get letters. We always participate, uh, participate for major case, where we send one or two detectives to help for homicides. Thank God they're not always in our town. And unfortunately, the last four or five years, we were averaging about one a year now. And, uh, this is what the actual commander, the deputy commander of Major Case wrote. To Chief Aaron Jimenez, on behalf of Greater St. Louis Major Case Squad, I would like to express my extreme gratitude to Detective Lieutenant Monica Ruelas for her assistance in resolving a double homicide which occurred on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four in the city of Berkeley. During the investigation, it was revealed the suspect in the homicide had carjacked a vehicle in the city of Belphop Neighbors earlier in the day. The victims of the carjacking were Chilean and only spoke Spanish. Investigators contacted Lieutenant Ruelas to assist in translation in order to gain valuable information and further the investigation. Immediately, her impact was evident. She conducted herself in a kind, professional, competent, and thorough manner throughout her communication with the family. Keeping them reassured and informed was her emphasis. An approach evident to all investigations on the call-out, she was instrumental in helping to return the victim's property and in gathering all the pertinent information investigators needed to further their investigation. As an honor to work with her, I personally hope I get an opportunity to work with her again in the future. It was easy to discern that she brings the same type of positive attitude and compassion to work with her daily. Her professionalism is a great credit to herself and the St. Anne Police Department. Thank you, V. C., Lieutenant Deputy Commander James Wetherton. So I, I just, before we give them a, a round of applause, she's done this many times. She's also a report writer now, which is a supervisor for Major Case. That is unheard of too, so, um, usually, unfortunately, it comes to politics. She's done a great job, very, very proud. The chief's commendation that Colin Rumsa had, and he's actually going to get a Major Case Squad award. Him and his partner, uh, got a clothing description for this homicide where the suspect, just because he thought that the victim was mean-mugging him, stopped in his car in a position where the metro bus could not move. The suspect got out of the car, went in onto the bus, and shot the victim several times. And while he was shooting and unloading his firearm, he actually shot an innocent person also next to him that was on the phone with his family, who she actually helped with. So definitely just a horrible crime. They stayed over. They waited. Instead of going back to the office, they, they were, him and his partner were driving around and actually stopped two guys of its description, caught them one with the same gun used to kill the suspect, or the victims. So that is awesome that you did that. You're incredible, both of you are incredible detectives, and you guys deserve a round of applause and congratulations. Congratulations. These two are really incredible. They, they deserve to be in the bureau for that reason right there, and they've, uh, done many other accomplishments too, so congratulations, you guys. Incredible. Last but not least, we're gonna turn off the lights. I want to show you something here in a minute, but I want Officer Howard and, uh, Verbal. Officer Verbal, can you come on up? Uh, one sec, Bobby. So, I saved the best for the last. Although all those awards were definitely well deserved. I wanted the mayor and the city admin and the board behind me and the public to know that, uh, this is the same stuff. We're unfortunately starting to see some more violent crime. Neighborhood Watch got to see this, but I wanted to make sure though, because we have, unfortunately, some of the mayor was not able to go for a prior, uh, appointment, and some of the other altered late that night, and it was about an hour and a half. I want you to watch this, and I have a couple comments, and I'll read the chief's commendation. Go ahead. Sergeant Ham is trying to effect an arrest from a disturbance, and actually it was domestic. He beat his girlfriend in the room, and they made contact with him. Sergeant Ham's trying to actually, um, uh, effect an arrest. And while we're waiting for this to play, just so that you know, he gets the handcuff and he's standing. for this to play, just so that you know, he gets the handcuff, and he's standing Sergeant Ham, who just got, um, uh, voted in by his peers to be a sergeant, and he waited his time out, also a resident of CNN, goes and affects the arrest, gets a handcuff on, and what transpired next was definitely, uh, very serious, and I wanted to make sure that those of you who did not get to see this on Thursday, that you now will be able to see
Get off the closet!
He's gonna go!
I'm gonna do it right now! Come over here right now!
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Turn around!
Yes, sir.
How you doing, man? We're just standing the wall.
My lady, take your seat.
Take your seat. I have my baby in there.
Listen to me. Hey, we just standing outside this door for ten, fifteen minutes.
I know my baby. I'm telling you, all my babies.
Stop talking and listen to me. We just standing outside this door for ten, fifteen minutes. It ain't nothing you can say this right now, we heard everything.
But I ain't, ain't nothing happened, dog. Uh, my baby's crying, my baby crying all day, bro.
Doing all this shit, it's okay.
I'm telling you, our, our people, we done, we done locked, we done got, and it said like, we heard we, our baby, we done had problems with our mom, like we done yelled.
Listen to me, come on this public, and show your blood.
Nah, I don't need some.
I think you was in a hotel. You can't argue with us, fight, you know that in a hotel.
Yes, sir. And we understand that, but.
And then you doing it in front of your baby.
Yeah, my baby was crying, yes, plug up.
But your baby was crying louder than you are, well, that was a fucking good question. Not what you said, wait, now this is not my head, so I'm sorry that you cooked your hands, so I'm.
I ain't, I ain't.
Your ID, I hear?
I don't know, sir.
Where's your ID at?
I don't have it.
Okay, you're gonna be arrested then. What's your social? What's your social? Don't lie, bro.
I ain't, I ain't on this one.
Stand up. Your ass gonna take a ride?
I ain't on that.
Turn around, turn around, turn around, turn around, can't slide your back. You check, you gonna take a ride today, man? I'm not gonna play with you.
I ain't on this.
Do you know where you at? All right.
He's resisting arrest, obviously, he's got one hiccup on his head this time.
One, six, eight, done minutes.
Bobby went to the laptop. I'm gonna read this, and then I have a couple comments to make, I want to make sure that people hear this, and I know it's on YouTube. Officer Jacob Verbal and Officer Howard, Robert Howard, chief's commendation for your outstanding performance on the fourteenth day of March, two thousand twenty-four, when you apprehended a suspect and rendered first aid to your fellow officer who was attacked during an arrest attempt. And, uh, he, you guys got him into custody after that, um, once Officer Ham was, uh, hurt, and then he was booked, correct? He had a million-dollar bond, and back in the day, um, he'd be going to the hospital, that's where he needed to go. Don't put your hands on, uh, any of our policemen, and unfortunately, uh, with the clientele, uh, in today's age, we gotta be better than, than ever before. Guy deserved to go to the hospital, what he did to this officer, and yet these two restrained themselves, did an incredible job, and this is what, you can see it on their face, and what our men and women have to do every single day, I promise you, something is going on in this town. So I just want to tell you guys that it was incredible police work, restraining yourself when you should've went to the damn hospital, and, uh, couldn't be, uh, more proud of you guys, because you guys know unfortunately, you hit somebody, so on, you know, the, uh, the scrutiny that we face unfortunately, so give you a, a standing applause, ovation, and I'm really, really proud of you guys, keep me cool, and they got a million-dollar bond on that guy too, and he's still down in county right now, so congratulations. Very proud of you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board, and thank you to the public for listening tonight, thank you.
Good work, guys. So, I'm gonna, 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 we're gonna have to go out to a closed session for real estate? The meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, guys, I appreciate all of our, our.